Good evening, like welcome one here to our regular meeting. And of course, the South Carolina Pre-Reg Information Act, Section 3480-E, South Carolina Code 1987 is amended. All the media and media area have notified the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. This time we have our prayer by Mr. Gobain.
Let's bow heads. Father, we ask that you continue to bless us. We ask God that you will allow us to have the meeting as pleasing in your sight. We ask that you will allow us to take the aisle and the weed or us in. We ask that the decision we make will be in the best interest of our children and the citizens of Darlington County. This will be asked in your name. Amen.
Now, Paver, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now ask for approval of the agenda.
Who do you approve?
Second, okay, second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor of approval of the agenda. Both, I have it. You're known to the citizens comments. We have one person signed up tonight. I'm going to read the guidelines for citizen participation. The first thirty minutes of the monthly meeting will be set aside for three-minute input sessions for citizen participation. Participation will be approved on a first come, first talked basis as recorded on a log which is provided. Public input should be in the form of suggestions, information, or comments pertaining to programs, schools, or the school district. Based on legal advice of our council, comments should not be made either complimentary or critical, naming a student, school employee, administrator, or board member, as these matters are personnel matters that require an executive session. Speakers' comments will be received only as board information. We have one person signed up tonight, Mr. Dwayne Duke. He's mayor of Society Hill. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Dwayne Duke. I am the mayor of Society Hill. I'm here on behalf of suggestions and just comments about Rosenwall Elementary School. I am the new mayor. There is a new energy in Society Hill. And I know that we are going to go forward, Society Hill is going to go forward. I know that because of the people that's behind us, because of the, just even the school. When I went into school, I visited the school the other day during awards day. And as I visited the school and spoke to all the teachers and spoke to the teachers, the students, and the staff, I told them that I was going to work hard to see that their job stayed and the students' schools stayed open. We have community people coming together for the garden that's going on, the little garden that they have, for the Lions Club, there's an arts program in the Lions Club. I'm a welder by trade. That's what I'm, a welder by trade, a builder. I've been in a lot of schools and retrofit. I've retrofitted a lot of schools. You know, and I know that there's thirty million dollars, I read in the newspaper, that we have no, out of the taxpayers, not out of taxpayers' dollars, thirty million dollars. My suggestion is, this is my suggestion, why couldn't we take that money, divide it up between the two schools, upfit those schools, retrofit those schools to be up to par? Instead of building a school and having all our students out of disarray, moving, leaving from where they're at, where they're comfortable, in the place that they're comfortable. I've been in the school, I've walked, I've been in a lot of schools in my life doing retrofit as a welder. And there's a, it, to me, the school, the bones, the bones look, look very good in the school. I don't know, we'll have a discussion about exactly what's underneath the ceiling and what's underneath the floor and what's in the walls, which is, which is the big part of the school, and I understand that. There's people that I've talked to all over the state as far as Washington DC that's concerned about Rosenwall Elementary School. Society Hill is the oldest, one of the oldest towns in, in South Carolina. It is on the great PD. We have a lot going, we are gonna have a lot going on there. That could be a beautiful town, a wonderful town. It's on the great PD. It was the interstate in the eighteenth century, in the early eighteen, nineteen hundreds. It was the interstate of, of South Carolina. It was the interstate. I want to bring, me, the council, and the people of Society Hill, want to bring our town back. We want to bring it back to a place that it used to be, a place where family is. It's our campaign through this street, Society Hill. There's a lot of, lot of houses that's empty, a lot of family houses that, that's empty. And I'm, I plan to reach out to those, those people. Grandma's gone, the grandma may be gone, but there's the daughters and the grandkids and the sons to fill those places, to come back to the town. And if we had some, it, our school is, our elementary school is the only thing we got. We don't need another empty building. People talk about how when St. John's, the high school left, it was devastating. I spoke to a gentleman that was in the high school, and he was devastated by when the school left. And I just can't imagine us doing this to our poor little town of Society Hill. I beg of you, I plead with you to please have, have an understanding of maybe we can do this. Maybe we can upfit these schools and have them up to par. Another thing, eleven to one is the ratio of the students in our school. I'm a teacher. I am a welding educator, AWS certified welding educator, taught at Northeast Technical College. So I know about students in the classroom, and I know when there's twenty students, and I know when there's ten students, and I know the difference in how I can, as a teacher, as an educator, perform my duties to educate that student. I can educate ten students easy than I can twenty students, and they get a lot more out of it, and everybody knows that, okay? We have been to those schools with it, back in the old days when it was ten or fifteen in the class, and now there's thirty, twenty-five or thirty. So the education, in my opinion, my suggestion is, is better in eleven than the twenty number classroom, student classroom.
Mr. Duke.
That's it, my time's up. One minute? Got some notes on the back. You know, who said you can't really put a cost on education? We know that. You can't, we cannot put a cost on the education. Okay, we have that money, and I know it's going to be, it's going to be used to the good. I talked to Senator Malloy this afternoon too, and just, just in brief, just about, you know, the, what is my plans? You know, he questioned me, what are you planning? What is my plans for this school? You know, and I want to see it stay in Society Hill, because I just got in here, guys. I'm a new guy, all right? I'm a new guy, and I got energy, and I got building experience, and I got, I can talk to people to get them motivated, and we have things going on right now. And if we can just keep those things going, if you take our school from us, if you take our school from us, please don't take our school from us. We need our, we need our school. We need our school to make our town grow, to make it better, and we will make it happen if you give us that chance. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to consent items, adult education admissions. Motion for that.
I'll say.
Second, discussion on that. All in favor of approval of the adult education admission?
Aye.
All right, both, I have it. Minutes for the regular, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting.
Will we reapprove? A minute.
Second, discussion, all in favor of the motion? All right, both, I have it. Next regular, Darlington County Education Work Session is scheduled for Monday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM, the board training room here at the District Administration Office. Next regular meeting, the Darlington County Board of Education is scheduled for April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM, in the board training room here at the Administration Office in Darlington. Budget reports and federal fund reports, anything, Mr. Douglas? And any question on that, anyone? Capital projects update? Dr. Newman?
Mr. Carter? Chairman Jeffries, members of the board, members of our audience, which it's great to see people again. Thank you for being here. Thank you for caring about our kids. We appreciate that. And of course, we have our Facebook, that's a new thing in the past two years, our Facebook Live audience too, so. We're gonna go through a few details about some of the conversations that we've had. Gonna talk a little bit about some of the numbers that are involved. Talk a little bit about some of the different environments that our students are currently in, in our older schools and in our newer schools. We'll talk a little bit about the cost for renovations and what it's going to cost to potentially renovate. In this particular situation, we started with the St. John's building, but there's certainly another exercise to work through if that was, you know, another indicator for Rosenwall as well. And then we'll talk a little bit about the money. The board has asked where, you know, do we have money to do this, and where's the money come from? And so if you'll just bear with me, I'm just going to kind of move around a little bit through some things. But again, board members, if you have any questions while I'm working through this, pause me, stop me. I have Joe Carter for Jumping Carter C's that's here with us as well. They were the entity that was hired back in two thousand twelve to do the original facility study in Darlington County School District. And so a neutral entity was hired to look at all of our facilities, all of our schools across Darlington County Schools, and give us recommendations about how we can make them better environments for our children. And so again, that started in two thousand twelve. We updated it in two thousand nineteen. Actually, we had a lot of conversations in two thousand nineteen. And then in spring of two thousand twenty, everything ground to a halt from what we were dealing with, with the pandemic. So again, we've picked back up the conversations, but just, you know, talking through some of the different pieces here. So if we talk about what our current schools look like versus a new school, we built, because of that building assessment survey that was done in two thousand twelve, we actually combined six buildings into three buildings that were completed in two thousand twenty. So all three of our attendance areas in Hartsfield, Darlington, and Lamar received new elementary schools, and they were a combination of two buildings that were in those communities that combined. And so part of the recommendations that were in that two thousand twelve have already taken place. And so just talking a little bit through this. So St. John's Elementary, this is a five K classroom in St. John's. And you know, the biggest thing right off the bat that I can talk to you about is that our older facilities and those that were built in the fifties, they have approximately six hundred and fifty square feet for a classroom. Our new classrooms in our new elementary schools have nine hundred square feet. So it's almost a third more space for the ability of children to be in there, the ability for space, for airflow, for light. So this is a new classroom at our JL Kane Elementary School. And you can see the difference. There's higher ceilings, there's significant lighting, there's technology that's on the wall that's over the whiteboard. There is cabinetry, there is all of the wiring and technology that's in place. We go to the computer lab in St. John's. And again, if you'll notice the poles that are in the middle, this is something that, that schools retrofitted in order to put technology in. Notice how close the, first of all, the tables and desks are with the, with the computers, but it's out of necessity because of the internet cabling and the power constraints that are in this building. I'm going to come back to what a lab looks like in JL Kane in just a minute. It'll show up in a different manner. Again, another classroom, this is, I believe, a fourth grade class at St. John's. Again, if you notice the narrowness of the room, I will say this, our people have done a phenomenal job of keeping our buildings up. Both, we're talking about St. John's and Rosenwall, they have done an incredible job of keeping those facilities clean and presentable. So this is by no means any bearing on the job that those folks have done to maintain our buildings. Let me go back real quick. One thing I want you to be, to take notice of, this is from the front of the classroom, and so that we're in the doorway taking this picture. So if you notice the depth of what we're, the classroom that we're dealing with here. At JL Kane, here's a five K classroom in comparison to what we had at St. John's. And if you notice the spacing, the amount of students that are in there, how close the tables are, or really how separated they are, truthfully. The teacher's arm, you can see, we're standing at the door. To the left, there's a whole nother area of this classroom, again, more space, more lighting. This is one of our classroom doors at St. John's Elementary. And when we're talking about safety and security, and we're talking about if there's ever emergencies and what we have to do to protect our children, there are these double doors that are in many parts of the building with this wide, you know, footprint that they have as well. This is a door at our new schools, and so if you notice the push bar that's there, you also note the lock that's on there, that's on the inside of the classroom. So if there's a lockdown or if there's an emergency, teachers, folks are able to lock in instead of having to go outside of their door and lock their door. And again, the, the push bar versus just the regular handles that unfortunately we have to replace a lot of. This is the cafeteria at St. John's, the current one. Again, they've done a great job. The cafeteria staff and custodians were there when we were walking through. I will point out here, there's a big stack of bags here. These are the bags that they're using for breakfast early in the mornings for the students. There's just no place to put them, and so it's not that they're bad housekeepers, they just, there's just no place to put things like that in the, you know, with the constraints of the space. You notice the poles that are in the middle as well. This actually, back behind this wall is where the serving line is. So back behind these solid doors is where our cafeteria folks are that are serving the kids, and so the students have to walk behind this wall and then come out. This is a new cafeteria at JL Kane Elementary School. And again, you can see that this is the serving area back here that is glass that everybody can see in, that our cafeteria folks can see out, see the children that they're serving. You'll notice the types of space that's here with the tables, a lot more room, a lot more space for students. You look at the ceilings, you look at the windows that are above and at ground level, the flat panels that are available for messaging as well as just during lunchtime. So again, just the difference is when we talk about what's going on. This is our cafeteria behind the, the solid block that I was talking about. These are windows actually back here. But you know, the biggest thing is the hood is within about four feet, six feet right here. This is where our folks are working under. We've replaced this hood somewhat recently, but still, we are constrained by the actual size that we're dealing with. This is the new cafeteria at JL Kane, again, a much larger hood space. These are stackable and movable equipment that they can prepare different types of food. And instead of being actually mounted to the floor, they're able to move these different pieces around. Again, the tables, lots of room to be able to use for cutting and sorting. And again, just the size that the folks have to be able to use for cutting and sorting. And again, just the size that the folks have to be able to move around. This is a hallway at St. John's. And if you'll just, you know, the key thing is we've got electrical panels that are in the student hallways here. Again, the well-maintained, but nevertheless, power that's on the access of where kids walk through at all times. Again, another power, this is what we're having to do in order to charge iPads in this room. You notice that the blocks are on this side of the strip here. This is not by any stretch an ideal situation for electrical and some of the constraints that we have. A lot of folks, they say, well, how do you retrofit old buildings? And this is an example of where some has been done, but it's basically drilling large holes through very thick concrete in order to have conduit on the outside of the walls here. This is an example of the fire protection system that's in, but again, this was installed after the fact. There's a couple electrical conduits up this way as well. This is one of our hallways at St. John's. Again, I will point out that this is approximately six and a half feet wide here for this space for students. We have a big problem with ADA compliance, wheelchair access. All of these things that affect students with disabilities are an issue with our older buildings. This is a hallway at J. L. Kane. It is ten to twelve feet wide, so a lot more space. And one of the big things in the newer buildings is they're one level. So you see everything when you walk down a hallway. And so the view from a safety and security standpoint is that you can see all the way down. But again, there's more room for ADA compliance. If you'll notice these doors, this is where the electrical is in this building, is behind actual wooden doors that are locked. Another hallway at St. John's. And again, credit to our teachers and credit to our principals and our school staff. This is their small group area out in their hallway. And so, you know, when we try, we're really big right now into having groups of four and five students work with an adult at a time to try to, you know, we're trying to catch our students up from COVID. And so this is a big part of it is small group instruction. And so you can see, you know, again, you've got a fire instrument on the outside of the wall here as far as a fire extinguisher and the space here. And then, of course, you see it narrows down even more when we get past here.
So is that what our interventionists are meeting with the kids at St. John's?
Yes. So, so, you know, we have a lot of reading interventionists, but we also have a lot of part-time teaching assistants that are also helping us with that small group instruction and one-on-one and reading to students. This is what's taking place at Kane. This is that space. So they've got tables, they've got small chairs that are suited for children. You've got this very wide space. There are several of these through every hallway at Kane where it widens out to have this collaborative space for adults to work with children. I mentioned that I was putting a pause on the computer labs because this is actually the computer labs at J. L. Kane. They are all mobile, so there's not a need to have wired computers attached to poles like what we used to do. With everything, with fully functional technology and high-speed internet available with fiber, this is the way we work with computer labs now. So they get rolled into the different rooms as they sign them out and need to use them. Again, note that you're looking through and you see, here's some students back over here. So again, you have full views. Notice the colors and the light, that they have higher ceilings, more space. This is the media center at St. John's, which is on one of the lower floors. And this is actually a ramp here that kind of, with a metal bar here that slopes down. But again, you can tell just by the lighting how low the ceilings are here. Again, they've done a great job of taking care of what's there, but again, poles in the middle. And this is the media center at J. L. Kane. And again, you notice the high ceilings, you notice this big window that looks out onto the playground area. It's outside of there, the spacing, just the colors and the carpet, the brightness. It's just a lot more inviting for children. This is our nurse's office that we have at Kane right now. I need to make sure and point out, this is actually a classroom.
You said at Kane, what'd you mean at St. John's?
I'm sorry, at St. John's, yes. So this is at St. John's, and this is our nurse's office, which is actually a classroom because there's not a nurse's office. And so they've had to convert a classroom. This is the teacher's desk that, again, stayed behind. And again, the area where students are met with the nurse. This is the nurse's office at J. L. Kane, and this is just half of it. Again, you've got a sink, you've got cabinetry, you've got curtains with a rail that could pull to cover. This is the other side where you have, this is the nurse's office here. So remember, we saw a desk sitting out in the middle of the room at St. John's. This is actually a locked door that the nurse is able to be behind with all of her files, telephone, any of those types of things. And here's a bathroom as well in the nurse's office, which, again, very important to have available. This is our playground. Beautiful sky. And you can tell we took this picture recently because flowers are blooming on the trees, the dogwoods out there. But I do want to point out a couple things. There is, this is all sand. So this is sand from here all the way back. This is one area of play, and this is another smaller area here. This is the front of the whole school out here. And then, of course, back over here is the road and the neighborhood that's right in front of the road. So students have to walk across the fire lane in order to get over to this area. And this is the playground area at J. L. Kane. Again, if you'll notice, there's a set, set and then set, and then these are basketball courts back over here for the students, full basketball court with two goals. You'll notice the play surface, this is the rubberized material that is made to last a very long time and be cushioned as far as the students being able to play and fall and all that kind of fun stuff on it. And then you also notice the fencing here. For example, this is one of the younger groups area, play area. And so there's fencing around it to keep our younger children there. Also on the backside, there's full fencing. And this, big point to make out, this is on the backside of the school. So you don't see any of this from riding by the front of the school. This is a bathroom at St. John's Elementary School. This is a girls' bathroom, actually. And I want to point out a couple things. There's a sign right here that says maximum four occupants right here. This is one of two sinks that's in there right now. And so this is a maximum of four. There's actually three stalls that are back in here. And then I'm circling this sign right here because that sign says high voltage. And that is a high voltage electrical panel in the girls' bathroom in this particular location. Again, another bathroom. One thing that's unique about St. John's is their bathrooms are on the corners of their hallways. If you don't visit there often, you think you're walking down a stair and you walk into a bathroom. And so it is, it is quite confusing at times. Again, the old leaded glass that's here and the older plumbing that's there as well. And then this is a bathroom at J. L. Kane. This is a boys' bathroom that's there. Notice the tiling that's down here, notice the tiling that's up here. Three sinks with mirrors, lighting, higher ceilings, much more light in here. Of course, the air dryer and the stalls.
Is the occupancy for the restrooms greater at J. L. Kane?
It is. It is. You notice the three sinks that were sitting there. There's typically five stalls that are in there as well, and then the space just in general. The occupancy of four has to do with certainly fire code, but also just how small cramped the quarters are. Outdoor cooler, this is, J. L. Kane doesn't have an outdoor cooler, but St. John's had to put an outdoor cooler in because there's no space inside to do this. Now, one of the big issues with this is when it's a hundred and ten degrees outside in the summer, this is incredibly impacted. So trying to keep food cool in summer months and early fall months when we start back, because again, we're gonna be starting back, our students start back August first this year. So we'll be during the August dog days, as they say. And so this is, this is, this is an issue. One of the unique things about St. John's is they have an indoor basketball facility. But the reality is they have this because this is the old high school gym. They don't build elementary schools with basketball gyms. And so, yes, this is, you know, it's neat, it's got the bleachers, this is a new floor. This had to be replaced because of water issues. We are constantly battling water issues in this old gymnasium as well as roofing issues, as well as alarm issues because the electrical is unstable. So we have lots of false alarms that we get calls at one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning over. It's been years. I know it's been four years since I've been here. But, but again, that is unique to have that large. But, but again, here's your HVAC in there, is this piece here and this piece, this is heat and HVAC.
Is that the right size for that space still? Is it heating and cooling out?
Yeah.
The entire building?
Cooling, I don't.
No, I don't. I think it's just heat. It's just heat. It's not a heat pump, it's just.
Gas heat.
Gas heat.
I did a walk through just prior to Christmas break, and that was one of the biggest concerns at St. John's was the gym, how they have such trouble keeping it cool.
Yeah.
Where they've actually got giant fans, they bring in, blow air in from the doorway.
Yep.
They use it for heat?
So I said.
They use it every day?
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's their space for heat. And I said HVAC is heat. Those are two heaters there. We don't have cooling in there. It's the fans, it's the large fans that we talked about. This is the multipurpose room at J. L. Kane. Again, this is, there's the stage up here. So you, we had, if y'all remember, we had our back-to-school convocation in this building two years ago. When the school first opened up, we had lined rows of chairs here. So you can use this space for events after school. You can also have portable basketball goals in here. And of course, here is your HVAC. This is heating and cooling up top in this space. And then goes along, down along the center as well. Storage at St. John's, again, they're doing what they have to. They're taking care of the kids the best that they can, given the circumstances. But, you know, if you notice, there's a lamp right here in the corner that somebody's using this space. And this is the storage that we have in our new schools. There are, there are storage rooms on every hallway, multiple storage rooms. They all have shelving that's in them, but most, but they also have lighting and higher ceilings and space and places where tables can be utilized. Here's another table back here. So small groups, again, it's not just storage, it's every space is being utilized for interacting children. This is the one elevator that we have at St. John's Elementary School. I've made this comment multiple times. I said there were four stories. There's not four stories, but there's at least three and a half when you consider what's underneath the auditorium. So you've got three levels of classrooms, but then you also have an auditorium that has an area underneath it as well. There's only one elevator, there's, there's two, three, there's essentially four buildings on that campus, and there's one elevator. And in three of those four buildings have multiple flights of stairs. They are more than one story. So this just happens to be in the main building. And we rode on this and it scared me. So I'm just saying that our kids have adapted to this and our kids have gotten used to this. But all you have to do is look at the paneling in here to figure out when this was probably put in. We have multiple wheelchair students that are at St. John's, and they can only use the one elevator that's at the far end of the main building on the left-hand side in order to access the campus. This is a conference room at J. L. Kane. So again, space for people, space for our employees, space for our educators, space for our parents and community members. So again, they are able to meet. You've actually got, again, whiteboard space here. There are projectors available. This is a comfortable environment for folks if we have to sit down and meet with parents. There are several of these conference rooms. There's one in the guidance suite, and there's one over in the administrative suite. And again, it's places, these are actually two teachers that are working during their planning period that are talking through some of the data pieces. You can do your professional learning community groups, which are groups of teachers that meet. So they don't have to just meet in their classrooms, they can actually come in a comfortable space and feel recognized professionally that way, so. Okay, so we'll talk a little bit about attendance numbers and transportation numbers here. So there's a lot of dots up here, and I don't expect everybody to be able to focus on every one of these dots. So I'm gonna point a few things out here. Currently, St. John's has approximately five hundred and thirty students that attend. And if you'll, this is where St. John's is located, right here in this circle. So this is actually where the school is. Seventy percent of the students that attend St. John's live farther than a mile away from the school. So they live a mile or farther out from the actual physical location, seventy percent of the students. So that's all these folks up over here. When we talk about bus riders, this is the locations of all of our bus riders. Again, this is where the school is, right here. And the farther out you get, this is all the bus riders that are riding buses down into Darlington.
What's for safety here? What's that top cluster? Where's that?
Well, this is Floyd, so this is. Well, this is Floyd, so this is probably close to Tony Thomas? Dusville. Dusville up here.
So say I lived your whole life, I could tell where Floyd is.
Yeah. So, you know, again.
That's Dusville out there. Dusville students go to St. John's?
Yep. So they're traveling all the way down into Darlington.
And that's McCann's.
Just like this group out there.
Not here, okay. Oh, McCann's over there. They don't go there? No.
No, there, there's all Kane.
Okay. Rosenwall. Again, they've done a great job of upkeep with what's in front of them. There were some renovations that were done in 2006 at this building, but again, the primary building was built in 1956. This is not the original Rosenwall School. This is the current location of Rosenwall Elementary. The original Rosenwall School was over where the high school was and moved, when they built, when they put the high school there, they built the elementary school back in 1956. And so this school has been maintaining since then. I'll point out, this is the, over to this side is the street that drives by, Church Street. This is supposed to be the main entrance, but it is not because it is not secureable with the airlock types of systems that we have in our newer buildings. You actually have to walk back this way and walk in an iron gate and then go back into the school this way to get into the school. This is some of our awesome students that are there. This is in the cafeteria. And again, beautiful murals that we have in the cafeteria. But if you'll notice how narrow this space is, how low the ceilings are. Again, this is the serving line all the way back here.
What's the enrollment at Rosenwall?
Current enrollment as of today is 116 students. And that is grades K-4, 4K through 8th grade. 4K through 8th grade, 118 students. Let me give you a little bit of perspective on that. In 2008, there were 210 students attending this school. 2008. In 2012, I think a lot of our folks in Society Hill knew what happened then. And our enrollment dropped drastically when the plant that was up in that area went out. Significant loss for the town and the community and the people. And so it dropped down to approximately 140 students at that time. It bounced back and forth. And then again, as of today, we are sitting with 116 students, 4K through 8th grade.
Is it, is there a consistent decline year every year, or are there some years at that price?
About four years ago, no, six years ago, it went from 139 to 146 approximately five, six years ago, and then it immediately dropped. So, and it's been declining every year since I've been here. This is my fourth year. It has declined every single year.
Do we know how many of our students, our middle school students who live in the, in the Society Hill area already go to Darlington Middle School?
I don't have that information.
But we do have students who, middle school students.
We do.
Who live in Society Hill area that already attend Darlington Middle, Middle School. Because they have that choice, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Is that the magnet or just the school choice?
School choice. School choice. And just to put, put perspective on that question. So there's 116 kids currently in the building. Twenty-seven of them are middle school students. Okay?
Twenty-seven kids between 6th and 8th grade?
Yes.
How does that work? I mean, I've been going.
Very, very difficult.
Eight or nine kids a class?
Less than that.
But how, but I mean, how do they have enough teachers to teach all the different subjects at middle school?
And you have no choice but to employ because middle school has certain requirements, you know, certifications. And so you, you literally have super, super small classes. It's not uncommon to have six or eight kids in a class in the elementary grades as well.
Do they have any honors or advanced classes at middle school?
Can't, you don't have, you don't have personnel to do that. You know, they, Rosenwall has a basketball team, girls' and boys' basketball team for the 27 students. But that's, that's it as far as sports go.
They want to play football, can they go to Darlington?
Darlington Middle School. Yeah, Darlington Middle School.
So they can come over to Darlington for sports?
If there's not a sports that's currently there, they do have that choice.
Basketball they couldn't, but they could.
But, but again, think about this now. Darlington Middle School has, I'm going to say 1,000 kids. Somewhere between 1,000 and 1,100 kids. And they have a boys' and girls' basketball team. And they have 1,000 students to choose from, or at least 7th and 8th graders that got 750 kids to choose from. Rosenwall has 27 kids to choose from, the same team.
They're not really the same team.
And they do well.
Girls and boys.
Yes, girls and boys, right. That's, that's for both. But actually, they do well. I mean, I, I will give, I will give them credit. They do well.
So what you're saying, you've got six to eight kids being taught by one teacher there, and you go to Darlington, you've got 25 to 27 students being taught.
Yep. Yeah. In typical middle school class, by the way, you know, what people say, well, what's, what's a normal class size? I mean, let's, in middle school, 25 students is a very manageable, normal class size. We shoot for 25 students in our middle schools. Okay? Now, it's different for, you know, earlier grades. You can, you can have smaller, and, and we desire, like, we try to get 20 students per class right now in our elementary grades, the majority of our elementary grades. But in middle school and high school, you know, typical class load is, you know, 24, 25, 28 students.
Are there multiple levels of curriculum for, I mean, so there's not any, there's not any honors or advanced classes? But then is everything else taught on the same level?
Again, you've got 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, so they are taught their standards, right? Their curriculum. So, so they are definitely taught what they need.
Right.
For their particular grade level.
Just not in advance?
Right.
But my question is.
And no electives.
If you have a math teacher, the math teacher has to be able to teach 6th grade, 7th grade.
Yes.
And 8th grade math.
Yes.
As opposed to partial middle school and Darlington Middle School where you have an 8th grade math teacher.
Correct.
So, so the teacher is teaching one level.
Right.
So then does that mean that there, for the rest of the grade levels, there are just one classroom per grade level?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, so if you, if you do the math on that, right, we just said that there's 27 middle school students. It's 116, so that's, you know, 89 students for seven teachers. And special needs as well. Limited special needs, but. All right. Again, we talked about the cafeteria, another angle from that. And I would point out the, in the HVAC system, they just threw out this whole area. And by the way, this can be combined with that multipurpose room, right? So there's, there's a retractable wall over, right over here. You remember you saw the multipurpose room with the stage and everything? So that can be retracted, and you've got the whole area from front to back. So you, you can do full evening events with parents and awards and all those types of things. It's a hallway at Rosenwall. Again, awesome murals, awesome murals.
Great. I mean, I think that's a great mural there on the wall.
Carolina Bank? But I, I don't have to point out to you how narrow this hallway is in comparison to, to what we saw.
Now, okay, so I want to ask that. So ADA compliance, what's the minimum, like a new school, what's the minimum width of a hallway to be ADA compliant?
OSF requires eight feet. However, 6 feet does meet ADA. That's the minimum.
But anything new, you could not do.
Right.
So if you renovate, your renovation, you could, you could, you would have to come into compliance for OSF.
They, they, they could grandfather this in.
So the arts, you already said you, you don't have band.
You don't have electives, right?
You don't have band? If I was looking at that later with that card, I might think it's art on the card. Because I don't know that you have a room for the art, for the visual art, to rephrase that.
Correct. You know, and, and some of our middle schools have dance that's available. Some of our middle schools have chorus, obviously band, foreign language classes.
Does Rosenwall have a computer lab? For middle school?
They have some.
Oh, okay. So there's no lab for middle school? Well, because I was saying, I mean, like, Darlington Middle School has an elective, like, computer.
Right.
Elective classes, so they don't have that.
Again, just talking about the hallways and the spaces that are available in order to accommodate children. Again, the attendance and transportation for Rosenwall area. This is the school here. And this is the students that attended.
So how far out are some of those furthest lengths?
Yeah, like Anya. Yeah, it's Bertown.
Yeah, but I, I can't, I mean, like, how far is that?
Jetport's probably, what, seven miles?
Seven miles from the school?
Yep.
And so these are further out than the jet port?
Correct.
Jet port, okay.
Let me look at bus riders. Again, not as many dots, but here's the school and here's your bus riders. Traveling into Society Hill.
How many, are all of the students bus riders?
Now, let me, let me make sure I get this number right. There's 77 bus riders out of 116 students.
So that, the others are either car riders or walkers?
Correct.
Do we have any walkers?
Yes. I, I would suspect there's, I mean, it's walking distance for some of the particular houses. I'd have to check to see if we've actually got somebody walking to school right now. But I would suspect because there are residential homes in the vicinity. All right. So that's just kind of a, a travel through the current schools that we have, our older schools, our older buildings versus our newer buildings and the, what's available to our students and what's available to our employees that are in those environments. And then we talked a little bit about enrollment and bus riders and transportation. And so now, we're going to talk a little bit about a, a what-if scenario. So what if we looked at a renovation cost for St. John's Elementary to take care of all the needs that are there? So, Carter?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board?
You want this, or you want me to click for you?
You can, either way, I can click.
I'll let you hand through.
All right. So some of, of what we're looking at, you know, we have basically three buildings, or four buildings, A, B, C, and D. We'll look at the, the original building first, which is the B building. You know, we're looking at a code analysis on this. It was built roughly around 1902. Houses pre-K through 2nd grades, wood-framed, brick-manure building. We do have some, one addition, or the stairwells on the ends are brick and mortar. It's three stories. We have, on the first level, we have approximately 20,400 square feet. And then on the two upper levels, what we refer to as the main level, actually, and the upper level, the third level, right at 16,800 square feet. The building is a, when we talk about buildings, this is a type V unprotected, unsprinkled building. And what that means is just built out of wood construction. The major structure is wood. The occupancy is type E. Now, for this particular building, according to the current code, which is 2018 IBC, the maximum stories would be one story. Now, you could go to two stories if it is sprinkled. However, we have one other little caveat, and that would be that the, you know, the, the maximum area is 9,500 square feet. And if sprinkled, that could increase to 2,500, I'm just kidding, 28,500 square feet. Again, other, other limitations there, but the facility is currently grandfathered in. It's being used as a school. You do have fire marshals that come by periodically, and it is safe to use. In, in the building A, which is its sister building that was built in 1912, houses 4th and 5th graders. Same, same construction, three stories, a little bit less square footage. The, again, maximum stories is one in this type of building unless it's sprinkled. Maximum area is 9,500 square feet, and of course, that can go up. And again, this building is also grandfathered in.
You're saying, okay, when you're saying maximum level, you're saying like if we build it new?
Yes, if you rebuild this new.
You built new or if you went in to renovate?
If you built new.
Okay.
Now, to go in and renovate, we're going to, they will allow us some leniency from OSF. And I'll get into that a little, a little bit. But, but we still are, are, the big thing is we're grandfathered in. It's still being utilized as a school. But a lot more renovations are going to, they're going to make us do a lot more renovations to this because of that third level. Again, the building is not compliant. By new code, we couldn't build it. We could not go three stories with this building.
Mr. Carter, one, one caveat too. I had mentioned there was one elevator. That was in the main building.
Correct.
There's another elevator in this secondary building, I believe, where the 4th and 5th grade are.
Okay, all right. The, again, the, in building C, which is, houses the, the cafeteria and then also the, the 3rd grade upstairs. I, I've tagged this as 1959. It could be 57, it could be 61, but I, I didn't have good information on it. But roughly around 19, late 50s, houses cafeteria on level 1, and then also the 3rd grade on level 2. This is Loadberry Masonry, steel bar joists, you know, a decent building, given the age, is two stories. Approximately 10,300 square feet on the first level because you've got the cafeteria, I'm sorry, the kitchen area that's part of that. And on the second level, roughly 7,800 square feet. This building, according to current, current code, is a type II unprotected, unsprinkled building, type B occupancy. Maximum stories for this type of building is two. Maximum area is 14,500 square feet. But if sprinkled, we could increase that to 43,500 square feet. And again, this facility is currently grandfathered in also. Again, in, and we're getting into renovations momentarily, but the, the building is, is, you know, a much safer building than the lit buildings. We'll just put it that way. For building B, you know, required renovations are on the exterior. Of course, we've got to think about storm drain, there's demolition. We've got renovations to meet ADA sidewalks, et cetera. We have fire lane access. Now, what that means is that the fire department trucks have to have access pretty much on all sides of these buildings. So we would have to go back in and develop the, the, the current, the drive housing, the services, food service, et cetera. So we would have to go back in and develop the current, the drive housing, the services, food service, et cetera. We would have to go back in and develop that drive a little bit more to give access back to the rear. One thing that we would also need to do is waterproof substrate walls. The building envelope, when we talk about doing renovations, the first thing we want to do is protect the envelope. That means the exterior of the building. That's your roof, your exterior walls, your windows, your doors. We don't want water coming in. We'll put fresh coat of paint on the wall. We have water coming in, pushing that paint off. We don't want that. So masonry tuck pointing is part of that process. And that tuck pointing, they would go and come in, and it's very labor intensive, cut the joints out with the mortar. And these old buildings like this, the mortar was really more of a lime sand type of mortar and was not the cement sand that we use today. So today, it's, our joints are more waterproof than these were. Certainly, a lot more waterproof than these were in town. So that's, that covers our, you know, our building envelope on the interior. You know, we will probably encounter some hazardous materials. I know that the district has done a very good job of removing asbestos. But as we get into renovations, we don't know what's behind the wall. We don't know about mold and mildew remediation, which may be required. Demolition would be required. We're gonna have to relocate some walls. I've got on here elevator shafts, and actually, that's not true. It's a new elevator that was supposed to be part of this. We also, the big thing that we're gonna have to do is fire protect walls and ceilings. We're gonna have to go back in and put in new doors. Current doors are not, door frames are not rated. And we would also need to have rated doors as part of that. We would need to come back in and make the building ADA compliant. Now, a lot of different things that are part of it is casework that's not ADA compliant. We would also need to look at-
What's that? What is casework?
So all of your countertops, et cetera. They do not allow for ADA accessibility to them, so we would need to look at that. We can modify possibly what is there, but in all probability, when it's all said and done, it's gonna be easier to go back in and replace that rather than trying to modify that. We've got, again, ADA toilet renovations that will be required, and that will be a must. When we do these renovations, especially ADA renovations, we're gonna be eating up square footage. So we'll lose classroom space when we do that.
Why is that?
To meet ADA, we have to have more room, more space. The current toilets are too small to get turnarounds, ADA turnarounds. When we touch those toilets, in addition to meeting ADA, we're also gonna have to bring those toilet, the numbers up to match the student population. Right now, there's a deficiency in the toilets.
So OSF, they are, they are what, govern all this grandfathering? I mean, that's, they are the body that says it's okay that we are in this condition and we don't meet whatever specific codes and-
As long as you use it like it is. But as soon as we start renovating, they're gonna say, now, wait a minute, you're renovating now. We're gonna make you go back in, and you're gonna have to fix these toilets. You're gonna have to meet ADA accessibility requirements.
So the law doesn't say that? OSF says that?
That is the law. That's actually the twenty eighteen building code, and that's what OSF goes by.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But like, right now, we're not, the accessibility and the situation in that building is grandfathered in by OSF and by the law.
Correct.
Okay.
Now, if you were to increase your student body, you may have problems and may be required to do additions and renovations. I don't know what that number is. They've got certain benchmarks. Once you hit it, then what you have-
You didn't even know OSF says that?
Yeah, I mean, that's International Building Code, yeah.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Some people may not know what ADA means.
Okay, ADA is, you know, American Disabilities Act. And what that is, is it takes care of our handicapped people, but also our handicapped children. And there are different requirements for our children that may be in the pre-K through first grade, I'm sorry, second grade. It changes at third, fourth, and fifth grade. It changes again to adult heights once we get above that fifth grade level. So those are a little bit different. And OSF has a little bit different nuances there, but it's still basically those categories.
And just to that point too, OSF, you might want to explain what that is.
Yeah, OSF is the governing, that's a good point. OSF is the governing body for schools in South Carolina. For any government building, we have Office of State Engineers, OSE, Office of State Engineers. And then for schools specifically, we have OSF, which is Office of School Facilities.
But school facilities are different than general construction facilities, I mean, the requirements?
That's correct. We do have different requirements for our K-12 schools.
That are not, that are not present in, like, Jamesville, like, a Carolina back?
Correct. And part of that governs the size of the classrooms, part of it governs, you know, a lot of different things.
Okay, which that brings me back to what you said about bringing up, like, you said, the bathrooms, the toilet renovation. And you said, did I hear, was I correctly hearing you say that you would have to eat into classroom space?
Yes, because we're just, there's no way to expand. We would have to either eat in classroom space or-
So if we eat into classroom space, then how are we going to still have enough classrooms without having to build additions attached to the building somehow?
You're way ahead of my presentation.
I mean, you just said, you said that, and I'm like-
But you just answered your question.
You answered, yes, exactly right.
I mean, I'm just physically saying, okay, if we cut this classroom, then you can't put, you can't put kids in that classroom.
You gotta build more classrooms.
Yes.
From the cost standpoint, you talk about irrigating. Currently, we're grandfathered in. If you start doing modifications, then you gotta irrigate, correct?
Well, fire sprinkler, yes, sprinkler.
Must irrigate, not fire.
But that's correct.
Which is unbelievably expensive for some reason. I can put one in the ground a lot cheaper than you can put one in a building.
Yes, that's true.
Now, when we did the, when we, the district did a lot of abatement, asbestos abatement, we didn't do asbestos abatement at St. John's. We did not.
And that's where we feel like we will run into those hazardous materials.
We didn't touch floors or anything, and every floor you touch has got something.
Yes, ma'am.
You're fine as long as you don't disturb it, correct?
That's correct.
It's safe right now for the kids. I mean, it's not disturbing.
That's the point I wanted to make.
And we should be clear about this.
Yeah.
The building today is safe for students.
Yes.
Is it adequate for students? No. But is it safe today? Yes. But is it equitable compared to what our new schools are? It's not close to being that.
So Dr. Dawson, to your point, the, that I'm aware of, I think your friable asbestos is out of the building. Now, that doesn't mean we may not find some in a wall, where they used to use old pipe joints, old insulation when this building was heated by steam. And probably some of that is, we're gonna encounter some of it. However, the mastic on the floor and the asbestos vinyl tiles that are down there, it's not a risk. It's not friable. The asbestos is in that mastic, and it's really no way to make that friable to be of harm to someone. However, as we renovate, we'll want to get that out completely.
One of the other issues that we dealt with was with the seismic about the requirements now. That if we have earthquakes, there's certain seismic things that we have to be, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, there is. It is debatable if we would have to go back in and do something in this building. If we would, I'll show you cost in a minute, but if we were to have to do that.
You mean, seismically, you have to do something to agree with the seismic?
Yeah, right now, right now, they have not, really have not required us to do that in these buildings. And, but if that was a requirement, then it would, the numbers, I mean, it's almost a tear down.
I think one of the other issues we had to deal with was parking. There's been a change. OSF is requiring different kinds of parking.
Traffic.
Parking at this point.
Correct.
Yeah, so you have to have three parking spaces for OSF.
That's right.
If they don't approve it, then we can't do it.
Yeah, so we will have to go through and do a life safety site plan, first of all, to make sure that we can get fire truck access, parking, pedestrians, et cetera, around and out of the building before we really, really deal a whole lot. So that's gonna be one of the first things I ask. Yes, sir?
Since it looks like basically we're gonna have to gut this whole building from new electricals, new plumbing, the whole works. And it was built in an older style of masonry, et cetera, or whatever, and wood. Is it the founding foundation of it, even if it will survive that kind of rebuild?
And to answer that question, we did not see any signs of any foundation or any wall deterioration, et cetera, where the building settled, any noticeable, you know, cracks that says, hey, this is an issue. We did not see that. Not to say that the walls aren't covered enough. But usually, you will see signs of that in the form of cracks, either in concrete or in the drywall, et cetera. And what we saw, I mean, is more normal there. So you're right. Plumbing renovations. Plumbing renovations would all have to be, you know, the problem there is the infrastructure. You're having leaks. You're having not only water lines, but also sewer line leaks. So all of that needs to be addressed. The mechanical system would certainly have to be replaced. The big thing there is the fresh air, we refer to it as ash rate requirements. But we're gonna have to bring in fresh air to meet the ash rate. When we bring fresh air into the building, we have to be careful, because that air has to be dehumidified, because we don't want to bring straight outside air in. Then we're adding to the humidity in the building, which creates our mold and mildew problems. Electrical systems, you know, we've got, we're gonna have to upgrade the switchgear. The switchgear is pretty much shot. It's just, oh, it's been patched, et cetera. So we've got a new switchgear, fire alarm, intercom, security data, additional power outlets that we saw earlier in the classroom, and then also mechanical power there. So that's your, kind of your nineteen oh two building. The nineteen twelve building is gonna be very similar. You know, not to rehash everything, but pretty much everything that was in the nineteen oh two building is the same there. When we go to building C, the nineteen fifty-nine building, of course, we've got general site work demolition. We've got additions, extension of the fire lanes to get us around to the other side of that building. We've got building envelope, same issues there. We do have one thing, that's EFS, and what that stands for is Exterior Insulation Finished System. We had at one time in this building, there were a lot of windows. We had glass block windows. That was removed in, my guess is, the early eighties, could have been late seventies.
Ninety-eight-six.
Eighty-six, okay. Eighty-six. And then when that renovation occurred, then they used that product of EFS to infill some of those walls. Interior renovations are very much the same that you saw below. Are ADA compliant, casework, toilets, et cetera. Remember, the building was built nineteen fifty-nine. We're gonna have to fire sprinkle this building. Even though we showed you earlier that it appeared to meet code, we still are gonna need to fire sprinkle the building to make it meet code because we're over, another little caveat that I did not put over there, on there, was any time we get over, and I'm gonna mess this up, I think it's twelve thousand square feet in an educational facility, we have to fire sprinkle it. And we would be obviously able to, in that building. Of course, we've got elevator, elevator shaft. We've got the plumbing renovations, mechanical renovations, electrical upgrades. Very similar to what we talked about before.
Like, C, okay, C is the cafeteria building, right?
C is the cafeteria, yes.
So, I mean, how do you just put an elevator shaft into a building?
All right, good question, because this building, again, is a steel building. We've got bar joists. So we would have to go back in and modify those bar joists, put in additional steel to support that. Probably we'll have some columns, but in those columns, we'll hide those in new walls that we would have in the elevator shaft. So all of that can be done. It's a little more involved here than it would be in the wood. The wood's a little bit easier to work with. But we don't have that much of a problem there, because those shafts are existing. But here, it does, it does create some problems for us with that. But it can be done. It's expensive.
Were you able to use all three levels after renovation?
You would be, yes. All of them would be accessible then. And again, that's just part of the-
What about the safety? I mean, currently, I mean, the connections between one building to the next building is an open breezeway.
Correct.
Would that stay, I mean, because that's the safety.
I'm gonna address that momentarily, but to answer that, to answer your question, yes, we've got, we've got, those walks are too steep right now between the buildings to meet ADA accessibility. So we would have to go back in and rework those walks. When we rework the walks, we're gonna be adding more ramp space and also roof space. And I've got two scenarios there that we'll talk about just in a moment. So if we look at-
Well, I can do it, Doug. You know, I can do it for them.
Well, if we look at just the renovations, this is just the renovations, and these are our estimates. We're right at thirty-three million dollars for those three buildings, okay? We haven't addressed the gym yet, and we'll get there. But thirty-three million dollars, roughly, that's a hundred thousand square feet in those three buildings that we've got there. So you can do quick math on that as far as square foot cost. Other consideration. So I did not include money, we do have money for grading, make the buildings ADA accessible. Money is not included for links and canopies above that. The current canopy coverage, Mrs. Hessler, to answer your question, is right at five thousand square feet. When we build those ramps, we're gonna have to put in switchbacks to make this meet ADA accessibility. When we do that, we're estimating that we'll be right at eighty-five hundred square feet of canopies, covered canopies, which are gonna be in the three hundred and seventy-five, four hundred thousand dollar range.
That's not included in that thirty?
It's not included in that. We're gonna, I'll get there in a minute. We're gonna show a bigger number in a minute. So this is other items that will have to be done. In addition to that, and to answer your question, the estimate of classroom space lost to elevators, big things, ADA toilets, is roughly one classroom per floor. And if you think about the number of floors that you have, you've got three in one building, three in another building, and two in another building. That's a total of eight floors, so it's eight classrooms that we're gonna lose in some fashion. Now, we may be able to save a portion of that classroom, which could be an itinerant type area, et cetera. But we're gonna lose in that neighborhood of eight classrooms. That's about ten thousand four hundred square foot addition at three hundred dollars a square foot in today's prices. It's gonna be roughly a three-point-one million dollar addition. The gym building, in talking, I did not have a lot of information on the gym building. And, again, but it's thought that the core seating area is roughly eighty-five hundred square feet. The toilets in that building, we would have to meet ADA toilets, because we don't want the students to leave that building, have to go back to another building and utilize toilets. We've got to make that meet. In addition, that we would also have probably a staff toilet in there too. We would need a fire sprinkler system. It has been said that the space needs air conditioning. I believe it does. So rough, these are minimal numbers, and minimal numbers. I don't know that we can do this, but with the minimal dollars that I have. But interior finishes, wood floor refinishing, ADA compliant toilets, HVA, this would be barred units we would hang on the exterior of the building. And then roughly electrical upgrades that are kind of minimal there, about three hundred twenty-five dollars would be the minimum. Yes, sir, Mr. Goode.
So that also means you're gonna reduce the number of people gonna be beginning at that gym. Because if you got to go with the way they build gyms and fields now, based on butt size, you're gonna have less, you're gonna have less room.
Well, we're not really addressing those bleachers. I'm not even addressing the bleachers on this, in this estimate. So if you wanted to replace the bleachers, then we would have to add more money to that. But I was just trying to get by with a minimal number of dollars on this.
But they don't really use that building for any things that people, I mean, there's not times when there's a lot of people in that building.
Dead dog or dance, stuff like that.
But I hate to say, if you're gonna do it, you want to do it where it can be used.
Again, as we're talking to you, we're seeing that that number's probably gonna go up. Because we're gonna want, if we do those type of renovations, we're gonna want to go back in and do other things.
But we're talking about future.
Yes, sir.
And you already said that you're looking at twenty, thirty years down the road. If you build it for growth, then it doesn't make sense to do it and not include it.
Yes, sir. And so, you know, one of the things not in here is, again, our exterior. I did not include anything for that building envelope, roof, walls. And then, you know, one other thing that I did not include is if you look at that school, there are a lot of- there are a lot of buildings that are attached to, for instance, the A building, which is the third, uh, fourth and fifth grade building. I don't know what type of firewall's are in there. OSF is probably gonna make us go back in there and at least do something to those walls to make them better or sound, more sound for firewall's, and fire ceilings may be required also in some of those buildings.
And Mr. Carter, just to add to, when we're talking about those extra buildings, there's also another auditorium.
Correct.
An abandoned auditorium on the backside of the classroom space.
Correct.
And so, you know, again, you've got that to deal with as well, as far as what are you gonna do, and that, and the district doesn't own that building.
Yes, I had a real, really thought about that, that J.C. Daniel auditorium is attached to that building.
It's attached.
How do you do that, how do you sell off part of the building?
The way they build it back, how do you?
Yeah.
Very difficult.
So, you know, again, more items for consideration, site security is a big issue. You know, we could improve that with perimeter fencing. As far as that perimeter fencing goes, about thirty-three hundred linear feet of fencing with associated gates for fire department access, maintenance, pedestrian gates, egress gates, etc., will be required. We're thinking that if you just went with rig roll fencing, thirty-three hundred linear feet, six-foot chain link type fencing, you're gonna be around a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, but we think you're probably gonna wanna dress up the front and utilize some aluminum, nicer aluminum, a little like wrought iron, but it's aluminum, it's a less expensive way to do that, and so that's gonna put us probably in that two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar range. Again, currently it's understood that there are four buildings being used on this campus, the nineteen-oh-two, nineteen-twelve cafeteria building and gym building. Considering that, a fifth building would be needed to provide classroom spaces lost due to ADA, Mrs. Hesler, I think that's where it goes to your question. So, there's five buildings on the campus, it's gonna be difficult to secure, you're moving students constantly back and forth, so how do you lock those doors? Do they always have to have a teacher with them to unlock doors, etc.? And then, again, the four classrooms that we have at Rosenwall, if you chose to incorporate that, that would be another one-point-three, one-point-four million dollars. And one big thing.
You're making four classrooms based on the amount of kids?
Student population.
Eighty-nine students.
Yeah, for that.
Because, I mean, they're clearly in more than four classrooms right now, or like yours is, and just on average.
Correct. And then one other, one other thing that I want you to realize is that we have, you know, five grade levels that are currently housed above or below, I should have said above or below the main entrance. So, you look at the number of levels that an administrator has to think about when they're, when they're trying, if a child has a seizure, if, whatever it may be, how many grade levels that you've got to go and really administer and there, it's a lot. And one of the big item that I want everyone to realize, that all this is what we think OSF will allow, we don't know until we get down there and sit down with them, so it's pending OSF approval of our logic that we've done, our firm has done on this. When we look at all of the numbers, you know, we already kind of looked at those first three, but when we look at new addition and open connectors, you know, we're looking at another three-and-a-half million dollars. Gym renovations and site fencing, right at another three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, and then, I'm sorry, site fencing is there, should have taken that out, and the site fencing is about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. One other item that I forgot to go over was.
The portable classrooms, because I was gonna ask about that.
Yes, I did not have that in there, and so, I thought I did, but I didn't, I didn't see it, anyway.
I mean, I pulled it down there, but you skipped, but you didn't have it in the price.
Okay, so, you know, the portable classrooms, I mean, if you think about it, what we're gonna have to do is look at the worst-case scenario, and let's just take that nineteen-oh-two building, I think it's got the most classrooms in it, I think it's fifteen or sixteen classrooms. So, we're gonna need that many portables. In addition to that, we may need a portable for the gymnasium, too, to house PE classes in there while that's being renovated, but the bottom line is, we're gonna hand out with fifteen portables, those portables, I don't know, Dr. Newman, I'm assuming that they're gonna probably be around a hundred thousand dollars a piece.
And then you gotta make sure that you've got water?
We're gonna have to put water, sewer, electrical, etc. to those. So, it's a lot of logistics that has to go into this before we even think about renovating these, so that's another, another number there.
So, what happens if, if the kid is on the second or third floor, and he's gotta use the elevator, and the power goes out?
How do you get the kid down?
So, the way that the elevators work, these are not on emergency backup or anything, but the way the elevators, let's say that there is a fire that occurs, the elevators are designed in the event of a fire to go around to the lowest level so that they can be utilized by fire department personnel. So, a small child, now, Dr. Dawson, this is really no different than any other building, any new building that we have. We have what we refer to as an area of refuge where we would put ADA-type people, be it, they could be on crutches, they could be in wheelchairs, etc. And in the stairwells, we typically have those area of refuge big enough to house a number of those, of those people slash students, in our case. And then, the fire department will go up and physically pick those who pull up and remove them and bring them, take them safely out of the building, and that's the way that that works, but that's not, again, we may not have an area of refuge in the stairwells, but that's the way that that would work on any of our buildings right now.
So, you still, today, that's an issue, it would still be an issue then?
Correct.
To your point.
There has been some discussion in the State Department and in the legislation that they are not supporting building, renovate schools now, they're talking about building new facilities.
Because of those types of issues.
That was a late discussion recently.
Yeah.
The legislature and the State Department of Education.
And, I mean.
How many, how many places build two- and three-story schools?
You can't build a three-story one, you're not allowed to.
That's correct. As a matter of fact, we can't even put some amenities on the second floor. We had one site where we had a beautiful view, where we wanted to put the media center on the second floor, and we couldn't because we had to make it accessible to all of the pre-K, first, second grade students, and only third, fourth, and fifth.
Because first and second, they have to be on the first, K-two had to be on the first floor.
Pre-K through second grade has to be on the first floor.
Correct, okay.
And the size of the classrooms are different in that regard?
Yes, ma'am.
And they have to have restrooms in those four, K-five, K-classes.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. And the code does not specifically require that, OSF does have a statement in there about that. The big reason that we do that, and your district is no different, we don't wanna send a four- or five-year-old child down to a group toilet which may be being used by fifth graders, it's just too much of an opportunity for bullying, and just all kinds of things that could go on there. Also, a little fourth grader, they get lost, they just get lost, and so, we don't want, you know, we wanna contain them in the classroom, and we can monitor them and watch and assist if needed, rather than sending them down to a group toilet.
So, do our current K-two classrooms at St. John's have bathrooms in them?
Not that I'm aware of, I mean, some of them do, the ones downstairs do, the special needs rooms do, but I'd have to double-check on the four K, I don't think, well, the four K had to based on certain.
Yes, yes.
So, they had to have it, as of a few years ago. Basically, everything on that bottom floor has got bathrooms, and that's your special needs in your four K.
But our first and second graders don't necessarily have bathrooms in the classroom?
Do they have K? Do they?
Yes, K, yes.
Yes. At all our new schools, they do.
What grades have it?
Pre-K through second grade.
Have bathrooms?
Yes.
In their classroom? Okay, so you, so when you were talking about the mobile units, I mean, besides trying to figure out where, where we put fifteen or sixteen mobile units, I mean, what, so, that approach you're saying would be a building-by-building type of approach, right?
There's, it would almost, it would almost be impossible to renovate one of those buildings with any students in it, it just would not be safe.
So, what do you do with them?
So, that's why we're talking about putting them in portables, so that's why we'd need roughly fifteen, fifteen portables.
For what kind of, for what kind of activity?
For the life of the renovation.
Which is what?
Could take years for that stage.
Probably a year for each building, so you're looking at probably about, about three years. I'm sorry, Dr. Dawson.
Where would you put the portable?
We just have not analyzed that, but in all probability, it's gonna be there in the playground area.
So, where are you gonna put the parking space?
I mean, you don't park in the playground.
They had got that, he's just giving us all parks, I don't think he's got that detail.
We just have not done the logistics.
And that cost is not included in this number.
That's a good point, Dr. Newman.
You know, that's the key thing that we're talking about, is we don't know what OSF is gonna let us do because they govern this portable piece pretty tightly. You know, it's gotta withstand weather issues, it's gotta withstand the plumbing and sewer and everything else, so you're, you know, we can say it's about a hundred thousand dollars to buy a portable, but as far as what OSF is gonna require as far as walkways and access to the main building.
And part of that may be you as a district, saying.
Remember, your cafeteria is in the middle of that campus, so, you know, if your portables are right in front, that's one thing, what if, what if OSF says you have to put them over in the parking lot, over to the right side, or, you know, facing the building to the left side, so, you know, I think in fairness, the numbers, we, this number does not include adding classrooms if we added more students from another school, doesn't include that.
That's true.
Or any growth, are you maxed out there?
Or any growth, no, not, currently, not, but there's not a whole lot of space right now. And remember, you're doing away with space.
By the ADA, by elevator shaft.
Right, so, you're having to, just to keep the same amount of students in the building, you're having to add classrooms because of the ADA.
Well, so, but are there, are there not some renovations that could be done and others not? I mean, how's that grandfathered in at work?
So, once we reach a level-three renovation, there's a level-one, level-two, level-three. Level-one, and this is all governed by the code, level-one is basically going in the painting, you know, you could, you could maybe able to replace a toilet, something like that. A level-two gets a little more involved, we're gonna go in and we're gonna replace mechanical, we're gonna do some other things, however, it still doesn't trigger a complete renovation until we reach, and I'm going, I'm remembering now, so I'm gonna do this, it's about fifty percent of the building footprint, but when we reach that level-three renovation, and that's when we're doing everything we're talking about doing, we're gonna be there, we're gonna be touching more than fifty percent, that's when we have to look at the entire building to bring it up to code. And so, all of these renovations would be a level-three, with the exception, depending on what we do with the gymnasium building, D, it may or may not be, and again, that depends on, we really haven't sat down with you in a work session to talk and say, hey, let's go over and look at these things, you know, what do you wanna do for this gymnasium?
And this doesn't include your fee?
It does not, no.
It doesn't include any architect's.
So, that's a legitimate question, so, how much more do you add to that for soft costs, architect engineering fees? We now have to have a building inspector that inspects our buildings as we're doing different work. What is, you know, how about possible asbestos abatement, hazardous materials, etc., it's not included in there. Would you go back with your existing furniture, or if you go back in and renovate, do you put new furniture in? So, those costs could be probably, on the low side, would be fifteen percent, probably close to twenty percent that you would add to that number right there.
So, another six million dollars, seven million dollars.
So, just, just, again, if you, if you talk about the portables, you talk about the extra classrooms we were talking about, you're close to forty. That number's not showing right now, but you're close to forty because of the portable situation that you have to put in place if you're gonna renovate the school. So, you're close to forty, and then you're gonna add fifteen to twenty percent to that for the engineering fees, for the soil fees, for all of the other, you know, professional trades that are required to make sure that this is done.
So, now you're at forty-five, pushing close to fifty.
And we hadn't even talked to OSF yet, we hadn't had a conversation with OSF, so, you know.
And, and so, you, if I'm correct, you said it would probably take approximately a year per building?
Correct.
That's excluding not doing anything with the gym, except just the A, B, and C buildings, so that's three-year minimum.
Right.
What, what, how, what it takes two years to construct, when we, from construction to completion, not?
Eighteen to twenty-two months.
For new building?
For new building.
No, that, that gym wall is tied to J.C. Daniel, isn't it?
No, it's the other building, not the gym, it's the.
The auditorium.
The C building.
Yep.
Or no, B building, the A building.
A building, A building.
Exactly, the A building.
The nineteen-twelve building that houses your fourth and fifth grade students.
But that gym is tied to a common wall, isn't it?
It is.
It is tied to a wall.
Because when you're looking at the backside of it, the gym is behind.
Oh, it's, it touches it.
It is tied to a building because it.
I can't remember.
I have worried into, so I.
The gym ain't tied, the gym ain't, the gym ain't tied anything. It's this A building that was the old high school that's tied to the J.C. Daniel.
Yes, that is correct.
To the old auditorium.
That is correct.
See, that's the main one, that's called B, that's C, the gym is over here, that's A, and it's tied to.
But there was an issue when we got rid of the, do some with insurance, insurance coverage, that was the problem.
Because of that building A being tied to J.C. Daniel?
Yeah, they wouldn't let us do it.
So, and I think it goes without saying, if anybody's done any renovations on an older home, has it ever cost what you thought it was gonna be? I mean, I, you know, that, that's what, so, again, we need to, we need to have an understanding of what is the current cost of renovations, what if it, what would it take to put that building mostly like our other new schools? And when I say mostly, you could spend forty million dollars, you still got four buildings, you still have three-story schools, you still have.
Security concerns.
Security issues with how close the road is to the front of the building, so.
Just the separation of the building, I mean, security is really, I mean, that, I think it all, that's, that's my big thing, and I think it all starts there for me, and thinking about the kids traveling, and I've told you, like, I don't even like to talk about it out loud because it's just, some of the safety concerns that are just kinda scary to me to think about, but these are our elementary schools, but, but, do you, so, have you ever been a part of a major renovation like this?
Yeah, so, probably the two case studies that I would point to, one of them would be Brooklyn Gacy High School, was built in nineteen thirty, occupied in nineteen thirty-two, I'm not that old, but I do remember this.
High school?
Yes, ma'am, Brooklyn Gacy High School, and we renovated that building in, the first time in ninety-two, and then after the fire that occurred, and then went back in and did some other renovations, security, etc. on that building, and we've done a lot of different additions to that, but that building.
And it was built in what year?
It was, it was originally built in thirty-two, but the renovations were in ninety-two, and then also in two thousand, two thousand and four, I'm going to say, but that, that may not be right, but in that, in that timeframe, so, and then we've done different additions to the building since that time.
This is a high school?
Yes, ma'am, this is a high school.
Not an elementary? No, it was housing that.
The other, the other building, and that one had actually three floors, although they really do not use the lower level.
What would they do with all their kids while they did that? Put in mobile units?
They had some mobile units, they also had another building on campus that they were able to squeeze everyone into, so, and then since that time, we have torn that building down, that was the old.
We could even think, take them down to Brunson-Darwin, but still, when your price is at north of forty, forty-five thousand dollars.
We, we could even think, take them down to Brunson-Darling, but still, when your price is at north of forty, forty-five thousand dollars.
Four thousand three.
Being, I mean, and so taking Brunson, what does it take to outfit that, to fit them in there, and has it got the capacity to handle it? Well, there, there's a reason why there's not kids in Brunson-Darling. Well, I'd say to outfit it for that, I mean, that's just when you throw away. We, we built a new school because of how bad a shape Brunson-Darling was in. So to be talking about trying to bring it back up for financial, for temporary use.
Yeah, we're talking about seven, two cafeterias.
And one, one of the problems with bringing that building up is, um, if the building has not been occupied for, I think it's twenty-four months, and OSF is gonna come back in, make you replace fire alarm systems. So it's a lot of upgrades that have to be done there. I don't know where that number comes from, it's kind of arbitrary, but twenty-four months is what they.
So, but back to the security, so the newer schools, I mean, what are, what are some of the things that are built into newer schools to make them safer?
So let's talk right off the, right out of the gate about the entrance way. We have what they call air locks, okay? And so when you walk into the new buildings, walk into Kane, for example, first of all, you can't walk in, it's locked. You have to press a button and say, I'm here to pick up my child.
But we could do that at St. John's, right? I mean, we could lock that, we could lock the door and say, no.
You gotta have an airlock, you gotta build another partition on the inside to where people cannot go anywhere once they're in the one door. So I walk in that front door, in my office at St. John's to the right, all those doors have to be locked. And then I have to be buzzed in to be able to get into that way. And I cannot go into the building because there is.
Can't go to the interior of the building.
There's a wall of doors that have, that are, that, that the opening is on the other side. So you can't have people that walk into a building and are able to walk straight in. So right out of the gate, uh, uh, the secure entryway, what they call an airlock system, which has buzz in and buzz out. It doesn't allow, if somebody came in with bad intent, they cannot get past point A.
But right now, that front door is locked, right?
Yeah, but I'm talking two, two-lock doors.
I know, but right now, we can have that front door locked where they have to buzz in, but that's how it is right now, at St. John's and that's the deal, right?
But once they're in, they can run the halls.
Gotcha.
Whereas in an airlock, you're, you, you buzz in.
So they like can go to a window at the office?
And you can approve them. And that's it.
Oh, I got you.
You can't go any farther.
I got you.
So you got, you got two levels of security of making sure the person that's there is there for the right reasons.
Gotcha. But what else is built into a new school that makes it safer?
Let's just take one story for a second. Let's take one story where the middle hallways and the corridors are all intertwined with each other versus what we're talking about right now with four different buildings, in different levels, in different angles. I mean, that's, that sight of.
That's huge.
Line of sight is, is huge with.
Even if you, at our middle schools, you can stand in, there, there is a point you can stand in and you can see all. Each hallway. I mean, from a central, and then, you know. That's a big safety.
And, and so I, I could go into depth about.
Yeah, let's not.
How difficult it is, but, but it's, I don't think we want to. I, I, I think, I think it's safe to say that, that, that the new buildings are designed with protecting our students in mind.
It's a safety issue.
And our old buildings are not. That's just the reality. And, and so again, I, I, I've used this term a couple times. When we talk about equity. We have students that are in, three of our brand-new elementary schools, our students are having that experience right now. And then we have some of our other, other students that aren't having that experience. Whether it be safety and security, whether it be, uh, spaces that are available to them to feel good about who they are and what they're doing.
Right, right now, in my fairness, we got a lot of, we got other elementary schools across the district that are not having that. Those kids are not having that same brand-new school experience, so why? Why St. John's now? I mean, what, what makes this the, the focus and not, I mean, I looked at that report, and there's a lot of average and poor ratings across other schools, so what makes the difference?
So if you look at the twenty-twelve report, the worst ones were the schools that we closed and built new schools for. So if you look at the priorities, that when that assessment was done, there was a lot of critical needs that were on the buildings that we actually closed and built new buildings for.
So those weren't in this cause when you re-did it in twenty-nineteen, those came out, right?
So this is your next, this is your next priority. And, and really, it, it is, it is the right thing to do for taxpayer money, but also for children. When you have a plan that shows how long your schools last, and how much money it takes to take care of them, and at some point in time, you have to replace it.
How much life will you have left in these schools?
So, you know, it, it, it's, that's just a great exercise for boards to do, to say, okay, th- those new buildings that we built, we should have a twenty-year plan of what it takes to replace the HVAC systems in them, to replace camera systems, to replace the systems in them. But at some point in time, it's not gonna be cost-effective to replace all the systems and you need to build again. Now, is that fifty years? Is that sixty years?
How many more?
That's pretty much what people are designing, uh, buildings to last right now.
So, so when, so, is it normal for people, school districts to ask you to do a study like this? I mean, is this common practice?
Yes, yes.
That we say come in and assess our, all of our buildings in our district?
Correct. And that's, that's just to give you guys a baseline of where you are, just.
I mean, is this, this is what they use to make decisions on?
Yeah.
What they do? Something like this?
And so, you, you know, again, to not have a plan means you're being reactive instead of proactive. So you're reacting to every emergency repair that comes up. So if I know I have a, a, an HVAC system that's in place, it's a hundred thousand dollars to replace it, and I know it's supposed to last twenty years, I need to be ready to replace it at that point in time. The board needs to know those are the dollar amounts that are needed that particular year to take care of all those repairs. That's being proactive, you gotta react.
Okay, so, given all of that, where do we go from here? What's the plan, what's, what's the next step?
There was another study done before this, that he did not do. Now, where it is, I don't know, but I think I got a copy of it. That guy from Tennessee did a study before you did a study.
But I think that all dates back to, I mean, my first involvement, you know, was, was with the first set of, the first referendum we did in the middle schools and the tech, and the technology center. And then that, it was shortly after that, that the board, y'all served on the board then, was that was when we started setting aside monies, using eight percent monies to keep, to do repairs, to keep, that was, that was capital.
This one was done prior to that.
Dr. Dawson, I think that that report, um, Mr. Doctor Stevenson, I think Stevenson, I believe was his name.
No, not, that, 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 that's not the one that Stevenson did, this was another guy.
Okay. I'm not sure, somebody had, I remember somebody did somewhere.
What's important to note, though, is that one wouldn't be relative today.
Right.
Unless you update it to where we are today. So you've gotta constantly update it. And that, that is the board doing due diligence.
That's why we went and updated it in two thousand and nineteen.
That was two thousand and twelve, but it was one, way back.
And that one probably still referred to chalkboards.
Right.
Rather than markerboards, rather than magnesium boards, rather than smart boards, rather than, uh, smart TVs.
Joe, did you look at Rosenwall any, to see what you would have to do there?
As far as to upgrade Rosenwall?
Right.
I, we, we, we're not tasked with that tour.
Yep, so, so, we, we, we started, we started with this building here. Because there's a lot of the same issues in this building that there are in the Rosenwall building. So when you talk about the corridors, when you talk about ADA compliance, when you talk about the safety and security, all of those same issues are in Rosenwall as well, right? So, but, but the big question was, okay, how much would it take to renovate, pick a school between the two schools? Obviously, this one was gonna be a bigger price tag to do, so it was better to start with this. But again, many of the same issues that are in St. John's, I mean, the Rosenwall building was built in nineteen fifty-six. There were some renovations done in two thousand and six, okay? But minor renovations, you know, the, those, the, the, those main buildings still have these issues. So, but the bigger question is, is that you're gonna have these types of costs associated with renovations, but Rosenwall's a little bit different situation in, in the fact that your enrollment continues to decline. So now you're talking about putting millions of dollars into a potential renovation for a student enrollment that's declining. All right, so, how, what's, what's the next steps? First of all, we are going to have public input meetings, okay? So public input meetings, I don't have that date up here, but I'm about to give it to you, cause Audrey's about to give me that date. So.
Twenty-second and twenty-fourth, I think, it's Tuesday and Thursday.
And which one's Tuesday?
I believe we start at St. John's and then we go to Rosenwall.
Yes, St. John's.
That's March.
Next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, St. John's, community meeting at St. John's Elementary School. Six o'clock to seven-thirty, I believe. And then Rosenwall's community meeting is Thursday, next Thursday, at Rosenwall from six to seven-thirty. And that's where we can gain some public conversations, okay? So that's, that's part of the next step. All right, let's talk a little bit about money and, and what it's looking like right now, and what it's gonna take. I brought this up at the last board meeting, this is a cost analysis. You see St. John's total cost of running the building up top, Rosenwall Elementary Middle, the next line, and then a combined total of those two buildings together. And then you look at Bay Road, which is our new elementary school in Hartsfield, and JL Kane, which is our new elementary in Darlington. Both of them similar-sized buildings that would accommodate the same amount of students that the combination St. John's Rosenwall would have. So, in eighteen nineteen, that was pre-COVID, you were at almost six million dollars for combined cost. In nineteen twenty, you were at six million, and remember, in the spring is when we had to deal with COVID. Twenty twenty-one, the reason why that number's so low, we weren't in school that much, we were out for COVID. We were, we had, we had thirty-three percent, thirty-eight percent of our kids were in virtual school, they weren't even in the buildings. So that's why that cost is lower for twenty twenty-one. But even so, if you look at Bay Road and JL Kane compared to that number. Significantly different. So that's an annual cost for those two combined buildings versus a new school, a new facility that we would be looking at on a regular basis.
Can you go back to that one more time?
Yep.
Let me just for a second, I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
What is, okay, so. The new student total at, at St. John's would be roughly six hundred students?
Six hundred.
Cause it's five thirty now.
At a hundred.
At a hun- yeah, so six thirty. And how many are at, um, Bay Road and Kane on average?
Yeah, how many, how many students we have at Kane?
Your, your, Kane was showing, I wanna say. Five. Five twenty, last check, five twenty.
So, this is just my back of the envelope map here. So right now, it's costing fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars per student at, at Rosenwall. To, per student, that's the cost per student.
Yep, you divided number of students by the total cost of COVID.
Correct.
Yep.
And JL Kane, we're spending six thousand two hundred.
That is correct.
So we're, we're spending double the amount per student.
Yes.
At Rosenwall.
Correct.
And really, if you look at a more accurate year, not for, I mean, Rosenwall, but for St. John's.
This year will be a better year to look at, because we've been in our buildings all year long. We still dealt with COVID, but we've been in our buildings all year long. Whereas twenty twenty-one, we were not in our buildings.
So you're gonna save over two million dollars anyway, you look at it.
Every year, every year. All right, where's the money coming from? Right now, uh, the district has a capital fund reserve of nineteen million two hundred, approximate thousand dollars. So that is money that we have that is there. And it is dedicated to buildings and renovations.
Where, where did that money come from?
Okay.
Can you explain that and why we have so much?
So, a couple things, over time, um, that is, um, the board doing a good job of budgeting and, and being frugal with their money. And really, COVID has a lot to do with this, because we got a lot of federal money for ESAR funds that we were able to spend on other things that we would normally spend on this money. So for example, computers, technology, we're allowed to spend a lot of money, a lot of our ESAR money on technology. Normally, we would spend it out of these funds.
Technology would be capital funds? Replacement of, of one-to-one technology?
Yep. So, so every year, we're buying X amount of laptops and X amount of iPads for students. Normally, it would come out of the capital funds. We hadn't had to do that for the past couple of years.
Plus HVAC also, right?
That's correct. My superintendent's update, I'll talk a little bit about that, so. All right, bonds available for other, for building projects, where, this is sixteen point four million dollars, where's this coming from? We get, uh, what they call eight percent monies every year in order to maintain our buildings, okay? And eight percent is basically eight percent of your total property value, okay? We're allowed to borrow that money against tax receipts, okay? So, so basically, it's, it's, it's like a loan that the money is fronted, but when the tax bills are paid, we pay the loan off. So every year, we are allowed to utilize eight percent monies. And it, and you're supposed to, the, 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 the legislators put that in place for school districts to be able to take care of their buildings. Remember, I talked about the twenty years worth, replacing all those systems? That's exactly what eight percent money's supposed to be used for, and technology, okay?
Well, why haven't we been using that eight percent money all along on St. John's? I mean, why haven't it yet in such bad shape?
The whole district.
That's for the entire, I know, but I'm just saying, like, is, are there things that we could have been doing along the years?
Budget that we do every year, we, we do that in advance, I mean, she produces that sheet, you've seen it, you just not, don't think, remember what it looks like, but every year, we go over that eight percent money and plan in advance of what we're spending and all the maintenance needs. And most time, we got more needs than we have money.
But I guess what my point is, is that are there thing, are there things we could have done along the way at some of these renovations? Or is this a, once you start, you gotta do them all kinda renovations on like a building like that?
I think the reality is, is that money was probably an issue at one time. We didn't have that much money available to us. That's, that's what the unique timeframe is right now, is that we have money and we need to take advantage of it while we can to take care as many of our kids as we can.
We did get a new jail with that eight percent money, remember that, a few years back?
Yep.
That was, and the eight percent, that's what did Brockington's renovation.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And so, so, you know, big renovation or medium-sized renovations of taking care of your facilities. So I don't think it's that the board didn't do what they should have done, I think they did everything they could with the money they had in front of them. We're just in a really unique situation right now.
I don't think Charles mentioned Mayo was another project that we did with that.
With eight percent money?
Yep. And, and remember, the value is higher now, cause we had a reassessment, okay? So, so the same level of taxes that people are paying.
So that is directly from taxpayer money, right?
It is, that is, that is, um.
Is that how we build the new elementary schools?
No, that's with the bond referendum, that's the penny sales tax. But, but, but I, I can answer my question on why didn't we do some of this? Because this didn't accumulate, I mean, you may have, like, this year rolled over one point five million. You know, this is an accumulation over multiple years. So I mean, it wasn't like we could go in and fix, you know, it, it, this is like your savings account that you saved up, and now you're gonna go buy a new car.
Didn't appear in one year, it's a multiple years.
And, and so that eight percent, again, we, we, we're level on that amount. That's, that's not increased over the past couple of years, it's not gonna increase this year, so.
So it takes several years to save.
To build up that money, that's correct. And, and now, we've not used all of our capacity for eight percent money, but that would require us charging. But that would require us charging more taxes to use more of that eight percent money, and we're not going to do that. So, you know, every, every school district has a ceiling on how much eight percent money they can use, but that directly impacts the taxpayers of those school districts. We are holding ours steady, because again, we can plan. You know, I would rather have it steady than have it low one year, and the next year up here, and then low one year, and the next year here. It's better business practices to keep that steady, so our taxpayers don't see any change to their tax bills.
Now, there used to be a time that you could, the school district could go in and just say, we need to do this. And you could just do anything you wanted to do. So, the legislature went in and changed that.
I got you.
But the, like, the three elementary schools, that was a referendum that our voters had to vote on. And so, that was sixty million dollars that the taxpayers had to say, we're going to, we're going to pay a penny tax to pay for these three schools.
So, where would that forty million dollars come from to renovate like St. John's?
It's not there.
That's, this is our source of funds.
Yeah, it's not there.
We use it for this, we use it to build something different.
Is, we've got thirty-five-six available. And so, if you remember from my prior conversation at the last board meeting, we can build a school for about twenty-nine million dollars. A new facility that would accommodate all of these students. And again.
We could build this now and not have to raise taxes at all.
Correct.
And use the excess funds that Kane can get on all the other schools in the district, which is where we need to put it.
So, to your point, what about the other buildings, right? Because we have other buildings that have needs.
Right.
You know, if you look at Pate, Pate is an old school, narrow hallways, small classrooms, bad electrical, I mean, on and on. I mean, any building in our district that was built in the fifties, they're all over the place. Those are what we have to stay focused and targeted on as we can. But again, this is the highest priority, because this is the most needed.
And this board years ago, before he came, superintendent's ago, had made a decision back when we did the referendum. The reason why we did the referendum, we hated to spend that much money, but they were ignored for umpteen years prior to that. So, we said, let's get them there, but let's use this eight percent money, so we don't have to go back through this again, and we'll replace the buildings. And that's when we started doing these building plans. Yes, they'll change, but we got to have a game plan. So, that was a game plan where it was prior to the twelve, and then the twelve, and then the nineteen, just kind of updating it.
So, again, I think when we're talking what's best for kids. I know there's a lot of other factors that are involved, but first and foremost, what's, we have to be focused on what's best for our children. What the needs of our students to be successful. We have absolute proof by the three new elementary schools that we built that our children can have a better environment, and three schools are experiencing that now. As a parent, I would really have to question why my child can't experience the same. And it's not because of a bright shiny, it's because of opportunities. It's because of children being in an environment where they feel valued, not that they don't feel valued where they are, they do. The adults do an awesome job, but you can't tell me walking into one building versus walking into that new building is the same environment. And so, that is the key pieces here. Now, do we have sentimental buildings in communities that we need to be very focused on? How can they potentially give back to the community? Absolutely. Absolutely. We have to be focused on the buildings in our communities and finding value to give back to the communities.
But, so, can I just interrupt you for a second right there? So, the the repurposing suggestions, I mean, bringing other schools there, and the, I mean, does, would we use those? If we, if we built this new elementary and we left St. John's and Rosenwall buildings, would we put other students in those buildings in our district?
We would not. We would not. But, for example, for historical buildings, there's a tremendous amount of grant money out there for developers. And so, you see this happening across small-town USA right now, where the funds are available for economic development, for certain types of buildings. These buildings fit that bill. That's where we really need to hear from our communities about what we, because there's one, there's one myth out there, and that is that schools are responsible for economic revenues. And they are not. We don't pay taxes. What drives economic growth is business. And so, and then when there's economic growth in business, they demand good schools. So, you know, unfortunately, there's only so much we can do, because we don't pay anything. We employ teachers and employees, and so, I think what we really need to be focused on is, number one, what's best for our students? And then, once we get past what's best for our students, if the next step is what's best for our communities, then we need to work hand-in-hand with our communities on how to get economic development and revenues generated. Any other questions?
Maybe. I have a lot of questions for you, but you answered just about every one of them, so I don't think I have any more questions for you. Okay, so this is not, this is a question I've gotten a lot. So, when was the last time we did any kind of significant renovations at St. John's Elementary?
Nineteen eighty-six. Now, we replaced roofs, we had termite damage three years ago when I walked in the door and had to tear out a bunch of beams because they were rotten. You know, we've done repairs, but as far as major renovations to what Mr. Carter was referring to with the windows, nineteen eighty-six.
We did some renovations in auditorium.
I'm sorry, thank you. The auditorium was two thousand and fourteen, thank you. And I should have had a picture of the auditorium, because the auditorium's beautiful. It's not you.
But not you.
Yeah, and it's, again, twenty-fourteen. You're walking into a different world when you go from the main hallway in St. John's and walk into the auditorium. It's beautiful. A great job with it. And we try to utilize it as much as we can for events. That, we need to continue that tradition of regardless of what happens with that building.
But if you had done, I mean, that nineteen eighty-six renovation, Mr. Carter, was that the level, that was the grade two, one, is that the one you were talking?
It was a totally different code in nineteen, nineteen eighties. The IBC International Building Code did not come out until two thousand. And so, this was done under the old Southern Building Code. And I was not involved in that, so I'm not really sure what was done, but, again, OSF wouldn't grant father an in. ADA was, American Disabilities Act was not thought of at that time.
So, when was the code that after you get to a certain point, percentage point, that you then had to bring everything up to code?
That didn't occur until two thousand, when the International Building Code was adopted by the United States.
So, I ask you about, you told me that you renovated a school, Brooklyn case, that was a high school?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, how many elementary schools have you built that were two or three stories?
The only one, it wasn't renovated for an elementary school. We moved the children out of that school, and after they were, we built a new school, and after, that was in Batesburg-Leezville. And actually, it was probably around the two thousand eight vintage, much like your original building was.
Who did royale?
I'm not sure, but at Batesburg-Leezville, we went back and renovated that building into administrative offices for the district. I think they were in a house before that, and so, anyway, by far outgrown yet.
So, while you're standing, this is another question, just want to kind of clear up the air. So, we paid you to do this study. Do you, does jumper horses have a dog in this fight? What decision we make? It sounds like we'd be paying you a whole lot more money to go in and renovate it than we would to help us build a new school.
The complexity of the project, our fees would be a lot higher on this renovation than it would be on the new school, especially if it was decided out, where we got the plans and.
And we would typically bid out projects too. So, you know, again, as a consultant, as a neutral consultant, they can put this together, but it's a bid process to go through all that.
I, if some, and I'm just going, Lynn, this may be in your segment too. I mean, I mean, I know the concern, one of the concerns probably in the community is that what will we do with that building? I mean, if we have all the issues with renovations, would someone else, if that building was repurposed for some other purpose, would it run into similar things? Or because we are unique at being a school, you have all these ADA, like, you've got to cut, and you've got class sizes that have to be a certain size, you have bathrooms, you've got to have, I mean, is there a different, if someone was coming in to repurpose that building, except for a school?
Right.
Would it cost as much as what it would cost us to bring that building into code?
And that depends. So, as far as what could the building be used for to meet code? It could be used for, and I'm going to get my R's, my residential's mixed up, but I think it's the R-two and R-three. One of those is like hotels, the other one would be apartment-type buildings, or condominiums or whatever. So, those would be acceptable uses, and then also business occupancies. So, if a business wanted to move in there, you could certainly do that, be it attorney's offices, whatever it may be. Could be that utilized.
But would they run into these same cost issues that we're hitting?
Some of those, yes. You know, again.
I mean, the mold remediation, but, I mean, but we would eliminate the over ADA stuff that we have to have, as far as bathrooms and all.
B bathrooms and all the classrooms.
B bathrooms and all the classrooms.
So, let's just say it became a business. A business may be able to utilize the tools you have, because in a school facility, we figure twenty square feet per one child. In a business occupancy, it's a hundred square feet for, per person. So, you wouldn't have the total need for the numbers of toilets. If it became, you know, repurposed into some other businesses, let's just say, if it was apartments, then that's a total different ballgame.
Right, I mean, obviously, each apartment has to have bathroom.
Correct.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, there are certain, we are bound by certain things that increase our cost.
Yes.
Beyond what we would.
Schools are expensive to build.
Yeah. And I think, just like Dr. Newman said, you know, if you repurpose it for some other businesses or hotels or whatever it may be, apartments, there are federal monies out there to help use that cost and push it way down to where it becomes affordable for someone to renovate.
We don't have access to that, at least.
Do not. Again, that's about stimulating the economy. Again, as Dr. Newman said, you know, when you buy, you build a school, that property comes off of the tax books.
And if we worked to combine the schools, there would be no loss of jobs, right? No positions.
Absolutely not. You got to have, still got to have people to teach kids, still got to have aides. You basically, if you have a larger entity, you still need the people to answer phones, you've got to have administrative assistants, you've got to have cafeteria staff to accommodate the extra kids, custodians.
We didn't lose, we didn't lose personnel by combining Kane or Bay Road.
Or Lamar Spaulding.
Lamar Spaulding.
Yeah, all three, there were zero jobs lost. There was one person out of all three of those schools that did a different job than what they had before we built the school, just one employee. And they're now back in the same job that they were in as at the beginning of this year.
I'll say, the middle school portion of Rosenwall, where would those teachers go?
They would go teach at another school. So, they would still have a job as a teacher.
Okay.
They would just go teach at Darlington Middle School.
Okay.
Okay, so, again, community meetings, input.
We're going to do all this again at the community meeting?
I'm going to do a condensed version. I'm going to do the speed version, condense it down. So, but it will obviously be available for people to look at and.
Are we going to stream those two, or are we going to just pile people in?
Pile people in. I want to see people in person.
Is this going to be a question and answer? Is this going to be input from, I mean, what has this going to?
It's just more of people expressing themselves, having time to talk about how they feel about it, what are the potentials.
But you're going to present first and hopefully answer as quickly as possible.
Absolutely. I'll do a mini version in the next.
I just got to say, I'm a little disappointed that there weren't more people here tonight to voice their opinion, because there have been a lot of loud voices on social media, and one person here, and I applaud him for being here to, to speak, is what I'm saying, more than one person here to speak.
From Darlington.
From Darlington, right, or just in, for either, for either. I mean, Rosenwall had, I mean, Mr. Dr. Byron might be the only St. John's person here, and I think everybody else may have been from Rosenwall.
Well, like the mayor said, near Rosenwall, near his family.
Yeah. There's a lot of history there. I mean, there's a lot of history at St. John's too, but I'm just disappointed that we didn't hear from more.
I don't think the board at all disagrees with it not being historical and not being sympathetic to the community's, you know, history with that at all. Our job, though, is to analyze it. We have to weigh that with the cost and what's best for the student, whether it be, you know, from an educational standpoint, extracurricular activities, whatever it is. I just think sometimes we do a disservice, so our job is to do a service to the kids by analyzing, and this is part of the process. It's a long process, which is, again, the questions asked and having the different people to ask those questions. But again, the next step is to hear back from the community. I think it's going to be very important, and then match that with the information that we've got that is factual, and we got to make an decision. What's your best route to go?
But, my other thing is, at minimum, based on what Mr. Carter presented, without knowing, having any conversation with OSF, I mean, we could be close to fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty million.
I mean, that's, that's two-thirds of the way. Fifty million, excuse me, fifty million, I mean, that would have been, if we're talking thirty million to build a new school, that's two-thirds of the way to build another school in another area in this district. I mean, so, I'm having a hard time understanding the justification of how we would spend fifty million dollars.
And that was just on one school?
Correct, on one school.
When you could spend ten million more.
And then what's your end product when you actually finish what they do, I mean, from a functionality standpoint? And then, again, back to the operational, I mean, how much more efficient is that outfit relative to a new facility?
Yeah.
So, you know, again, I want to see the academics, I want to see the impact on the kids first, okay? That's the question we've been talking about outside of this, and then the numbers, I say, would be secondary. Numbers are secondary. First of all, is what benefit, how do the children benefit, the students benefit more is a number one part, I think, about. And then, secondly, is see how that fits in, after you put that into play, then what are the numbers like? We kind of got the numbers now, so we hope to hear more about.
And I think, you know, a couple of our principals at those new buildings can talk about what that looks like now too.
And I think that would be interesting to us and to the public.
Just opportunities for kids. We certainly can address that. Okay.
Okay. Carter, like to come and join.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Hope you're back, alright?
Please stay, please stay.
I thought that was a cover bun, I wasn't sure if it was.
Here's my phone, it was my phone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? Everybody's got their ass out. Okay, moving on to superintendent's update.
I was going to turn off your screen.
Yeah, we'll turn the screen off so that everybody's not staring at our money figure here. That remote's right there, if you'll just, the white remote, the white remote, and then hit.
Oh, we lost our office.
This is doesn't it?
Okay. Guess you still have four. More females.
Superintendent's update. I just have a couple items. First and foremost, the, a lot of conversations about the new funding model that the Ways and Means Committee, as well as the governor's put out. And we've been trying to crunch through numbers and see how that impacts us. Again, I think it's very important for everybody to understand, when the governor originally came out, the legislators talked about a four thousand dollar increase for teachers. That is not exactly what they're doing, okay? And so, at least at the moment, that's not exactly what they're doing. We hope to see some revisions to this. But what they, what, where the four thousand dollars comes into play is right now, the minimum salary schedule starts at thirty six thousand dollars. And so, any district that currently starting salary is thirty six thousand dollars, the state is giving them money to bring them up to forty, okay? It's the same thing with our district, but our minimum salary is thirty nine thousand already because the board took the initiative to be the best paying district in the PD, sending a strong message for our teachers. So, unfortunately, we would only get the difference between thirty nine and forty thousand dollars at this point in time based off the current funding formula. So, I know a lot of people out there hearing four thousand dollars and, and I really don't know how this is gonna get reconciled at the state level. But I do need to make sure that everybody understands the details of that are it's the minimum salary scale that's being brought up to forty thousand.
So, our veteran teachers would not see any of that four thousand?
They would see a thousand dollars. So, they're gonna increase the cell of every year for every teacher, whatever it takes to bring it up to forty thousand, okay? And every cell above that.
Just like we did when we did our.
Okay. So, she will shift everything.
Everything would shift up. That's right. So, everything shifts up. In, in this case, what's proposed right now, it, they would give us the money to pay a thousand dollars more for every teacher, okay?
But in a district that, that was, their base was thirty six.
They would boost them, everybody gets a four thousand dollars.
Everybody in that district gets a four thousand dollar. So, we get penalized because we.
We were proactive. Correct. That is correct. And that is the sticking point that I've talked with our legislators about as well, is that we were proactive trying to help teacher pay and, and it seems like we're being penalized now.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it being penalized. I would say that our teachers have benefited from more years of making that money.
They did, but our budget was penalized because that came out of our pocket relative.
Oh, because they didn't fund, the state was funding it.
They did, right.
We funded that. Yeah. Because that's another point I'd like to make too, is that the state dictates that we do things sometimes, but then doesn't fund.
That's called unfunded mandates.
Unfunded mandates.
A lot of times. Which is what we've been.
Say again, for the good of the back, unfunded mandates.
Good question, Lynn. Okay. And I think we, we did all this when we, Ms. Renee and you were reevaluating all the pay scales and all like that. So, we've called up all the teachers as we're at the starting thing of thirty six through the years and then they've been bumped up to where they should be or what we elevated them to?
Yes. So, so, so when we made those adjustments, you know, it's, you all, your starting point is starting salary. That's what you base it off of. But, but every cell increases above that, okay?
And we've stitched all that now where it's all relative, right?
It, it is. So, we're at thirty nine thousand and then we also have a thousand dollar.
What first year signing?
Mentoring signing for our, our new teachers that are first year teachers, not new to the district, but first year teaching in the profession. There's another thousand dollars that, that brings them to forty. But, but again, I mean, you probably saw Gringle in the news recently. Their, their starting salary is forty one thousand, six hundred dollars.
So, they're not getting anything.
They're not getting anything from the state for increasing teacher salaries. And, and I will say, there's very few districts out there right now that pay thirty six thousand dollars for starting salary. Very few. There are a few, but not many. So, I, I, I think what that means that, that for the majority of school districts out there, we're not getting funded what the PR messages out there.
Because they were out of touch. All the districts were tired of it. They couldn't recruit, couldn't get anything. We kept waiting on the state to do it, didn't happen. So, all the districts tried to find a ways within their budgets to do it. A lot of them, as he said, did it and they aren't getting the full impact of what they're saying they're gonna do.
But they're leveling the playing field automatically to some degree, right?
Well, it, it is, but when you start.
It's not fair, don't get me wrong.
Yeah. When you start thinking like cost of living and you start thinking of, you know, all the other things that, that if, again, if our board is committed for us being the highest paying district in the PD, you're almost not allowed to do it.
Yep.
Uh, you know, they're limiting us essentially.
So, they will forevermore fund that additional money or you think at some point they'll take the bill?
Oh, no. It's recurring. It's recurring money. So, so what they're saying is we're gonna bring everybody, essentially they're saying every teacher in South Carolina will make at least forty thousand dollars a year.
We, the state will make up the difference for those that are not currently.
Wherever you are. Wherever you are. That's right.
So, the few that were still at thirty six, they'll get four. Those of us that were already at thirty nine will get one and those that were above such as great won't get nothing.
Right.
So, if we wanna stay the highest in the PD, we're gonna have to up ours to whatever, forty two, forty three, whatever.
Just food for thought. So, but, but these are things that are going on that I'm, I'm hoping that it's, uh, it's not finalized at this point, that these concerns are being heard and, and that they need to think about, if you're really trying to increase salaries for everybody relative, let's increase them for everybody, not just the minimum. So, we'll be getting more information on that. I, I know that Ms. Douglas has been in a lot of meetings about it. We're continuing to get information. We'll have an update at the work session that we have for March as far as the budget calendar and update on budgets. The other thing that, that kind of alludes back to our HVAC conversation are, we do have preliminary approval for our S R three plan, which is approximately thirty nine million dollars total. But, that's all right. But we did, you know, we've been waiting for approval for a while on this and we were going back and forth. And so, we finally got preliminary approval. And it's, what's included in there is the Ulmer Gem HVAC in Hartsfield, as well as the district office HVAC project. That's all wrapped into S R monies, which frees up those monies in capital to be spent on something else. So, just know that we, we are utilizing that money that will free up more capital money as well. So, for example, more technology than we originally had in the plan, but that just means we're not paying that technology out of capital. We can use that for some other things for capital. So, we're working through that. And then a couple positive notes, we, we, this Thursday and Friday, we have a, we have a PD day on Thursday and then Friday, our schools are closed for school personnel and students. Obviously, students won't be there on Thursday either.
What is a PD, what is that?
Professional development.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I was thinking PD like P E E D.
Got you, got you.
PD, good.
We have all these acronyms tonight, so, uh, but no, it's, we, we've got two days.
PD day.
Teachers have, teachers have two days without students. Schools have two days without students. And of course, school personnel will not be working on Friday. That, that's kinda like a summer day that we move from the summer into the school year in order to give a break. So, looking forward to that. And on Thursday, at the Hartsfield Arena, we are gonna be doing Orange Frog Professional Development, which is fun, fun, fun for about four hundred of our employees on Thursday. So, that, that is a wide swath of different employees across the district, you know, bus drivers, food servers, teachers, TAs, you name it. But it will be a, a very joyful day is what I can say based on what we've experienced. And I've been talking about it for two years. I know y'all are tired of hearing about Orange, but I think.
No, I kinda like it.
You're gonna hear a lot more about it after, after Thursday. So, that's my superintendent's report for.
Okay. Any questions? Anyone? All right. Board member input. Jay?
Good.
Saul?
Richard?
I'm good.
I'm done.
I'm good.
I've sat in a note tonight.
Go ahead, Warren. Ask your question. What question? Go ahead, Warren.
Remember your ethics reports need to be in, I think, end of this month.
That's a good one.
Yes.
But what, and, and they have created a new.
I'll be fine again.
There's a new website.
Yeah.
And you gotta create a new password.
And you gotta create a new, I mean, it's, it's a little more, it's a little trickier than it was in previous years, just FYI.
We were told it was not very user friendly to allow more than five minutes to go in and do.
Yeah.
Well, they timed you out if you don't get it all done quick enough.
Yeah. It, it was not, it's not necessarily user friendly.
So, so don't wait till the last minute, I think.
Correct.
But it's the same website, right?
It's the same, well, it actually.
I have no idea how to hit it right now.
It links you into a new website.
I get fined every year regardless.
And you gotta, you have to do a whole new password.
I know, but I don't know which one it is. I always file the wrong thing. I thought I did what I was supposed to do and they just sent me a fine.
And remember, open house next Sunday at Bay Road and Kane.
Yep.
Two to four.
And you didn't ask her one question.
I need vacancies, he's waiting on it.
He's been waiting for five, four hours for that question. He's ready to go.
We're ready, he's got you.
I don't even have to ask the question, wait.
I have no idea, I just. Twenty one.
Twenty one.
Yes, sir. So, uh, looking pretty good going into next year. Principals are actively recruiting. We, uh, we went to a fair this past Tuesday and got two teachers sign their commitment with us, so. We're in good shape right now.
So, is that window of, of turning back in contracts, is that closed? Is that done? No.
Just start.
It's just starting.
Yeah. It's the busy season. It's the busy season. We'll have much, much better, more accurate numbers for you next meeting.
Okay. And they do have date of capital on, I think, April twenty seventh. Anybody here is to go? Okay. That's all I've got. Personnel actions.
How many we accept the administration's recommendation with their dental?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Let's have it. Executive session.
How many we go on executive session to discuss personnel and contractual matters?
Second.
I'll say.
Discussion on that. All in favor of the motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters and contractual matters? Aye. Oppose? Let's have it. Take a five minute read there.
We're now back in open session. Dr. Dawson made a motion to come out, seconded by Lucas. And are we going to take any motions?
I've got two motions. The first is I move that we direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding a professional employee's breach of contract.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion on that. I want to favor the motion. Aye. Aye. Oppose? Ayes have it.
And second, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the district's recommendation for the head coach position at Lamar High School.
Head football coach.
Yeah, head football coach.
Second.
Second. Okay. Discussion on that. I'm in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Ayes have it.
I'm with the adjournment.
Second. I want to favor the motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you all.